Evening again, I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole for the Village of Cary for June 21st, 2022 to order with roll call please.
Winehammer?
Here.
Cavelli?
Here.
Collier?
Here.
Walrath?
Here.
McAlpine?
Here.
Dudak?
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now moving to the public comment where the public is invited to make an issue-oriented comment on any matter of public concern that otherwise on the agenda. All I see are people that are here for agenda items. Anybody else want to say anything before we get started? Okay, now moving to discussion regarding 441 West Main Street, which is formerly our senior center.
Mayor Village Board, we have here tonight our representatives from True North Properties. They were before you, I guess Nicholas was before you at one of our previous meetings. So this is an opportunity for you to get to meet George and learn a little bit more about their company. As the board is aware, they're interested in redeveloping the old senior center building. And after looking at the site in a little bit more detail, they found an opportunity to potentially add one, two, three more buildings. That's what they want to talk to you about this evening is additional concept here for some more buildings on the site. So I'll turn it over to George Nicholas.
Well, good evening. Nice seeing you all here. It's my first time. Many faces I don't know, except maybe one or two, three. And so thank you for giving me the time to be here and to also maybe present this project. I really like this. You know, there is some that I really go and hunt and look for it and some that find you and this is one of those and I really, really like this. We'd like to make it look like that if it's possible. Or if not, we can just do the old school, which that's what I really like. And I'm not, I'm not, I don't like the new buildings, but I like, I think the whole property would look a lot nicer. Like, because there is more land that that school needs for what we would be doing with that. So, thank you.
Courtney, do you want to flip to the next one? And maybe George, if you could go over just the floor plans here that you had for the new buildings.
Yeah, so these are only for the new buildings.
Yep.
I've done this over and over and over since 91. That's where I started. That's more like Chicago. Sometime we would put stone, limestone on the facade, but that's that type of building. So I have this, this is like with closed eyes, I know everything would have fit. And all the, we're a small business, family-owned business. All the guys that work for us, most of them like plumbers, electricians, roofers, this is all goes through years. I'm on that exit out kinda, and I use the same guys. So we train to do like our master plans, kinda like to have, but of course we do a lot of remodeling, which nothing fits. I mean, we're doing one in Huntley right now. It's an old Cornell building. And it's like, I mean, it's foot of concrete here and a beam there and all since 1800s. So it's built by, you know, in three, four stages. So it's all over. So, but this is like our master plan. This is a Chicago gray stone, if I can put it that way. It's a very simple, simple layout, but it's very for rental purposes. That's what a lot of people are used to. Like, they come in and they just see everything and it's kinda open here. Lot of light in it, windows on both sides and so on. Height will match with the existing building. Either this new building would be three-story. The old building, the old school is pretty tall building, the way, so to build a two-story building like that is not really, it's gonna be shorter building. And then I kinda wanna stay with that height, just about a foot under the school height or even roof. So visually, if I'm looking at, it looks like it's a safe building. I'm trying to do the same wash or painted white brick on the new building as well, put brick and then paint it. So it's, so it matches the school. And use the big kinda same-sized window. It's a bigger window, but a three, three narrow and tall windows. And a garage, a landscape, it's nice and that's it.
Anybody have any immediate questions for them? I know there's been, a couple of comments have been floated my way, so please chime in.
I guess too, while the board is processing the comments, this certainly would have to go through the zoning process. Ryan, there would be that public outreach as well. So this is just an initial concept review with the board to get any feedback that you have. There could be additional changes that occur, but based on the feedback I think that we got initially, I know that the board was interested in seeing garages out there, which True North Properties has added the garages. Those buildings, you know, we didn't initially see them. That was those three new buildings. But as I mentioned before, that was a part of their further investigation and reviewing the property and seeing that this property is much larger than I think what they initially anticipated. So they are open if the board is, would prefer to see a building reduced or modified.
Or just, just the existing building, just this existing property. Probably too much parking. There probably needs to be stripped some of it, landscape it. I'm fine with that. I, we own quite a bit of units. We might necessarily need more units. I just thought it's gonna make it newer or better feel in the neighborhood, but not necessarily that we have to do it.
So we, we think there, you know, does make some sense to potentially exploring additional building or two. We talked internally to just one of Director Simmons' comments was maybe combining two of those buildings to make it one larger building to match the massing of the existing senior center. I don't know if that's a possibility, but that was one that we talked about. So again, this is just a concept review to continue to talk and get some dialogue and provide the developers with some feedback here on what you think.
And I'm happy to hear you, actually, I'm happy to hear you echo exactly the comments that I had made back to the staff and to the mayor of making sure that whatever we put up new matches the existing. Not just in the facade, but you've got these, these nice old windows that are arched at the top for no reason now with the new inserts in it, but if we can match something on that. The end result, none of us being engineers or architects, the end result is whatever we put up new needs to match and look like it belongs there. So to your point of maybe reducing the building to where you have two that look very similar in size, and then in that scenario, maybe even it creates a courtyard in the back for the, for the tenants' use, that to me would have a lot of appeal. This is going to be, just by the number of units and the size of that property and the location downtown, it is going to be a premium sale. It's gonna be a premium rental unit, so we can afford to use up a little bit of space for something like an outdoor usage for the tenants.
I'm gonna echo what trustee Dudak said. First of all, tickled pink that you're doing this. I think all of us were thrilled that you were to repurpose that building. And that's something that all of us were in agreement, that we really wanted to see that happen. And we've seen some of your work in Crystal Lake and other areas. You do a great job. And your son, right? Your son had mentioned too how right away these units go up and they're, they're ready to be rented out. I think you would have the exact same effect here. But I, I would love it if, I wouldn't mind just combining and doing two buildings instead of four.
The center entrance.
Right. And then just, but we really felt it was important when you're doing that, that I think people these days really want some type of parking. So we were thrilled that you were gonna be able to do those garages as well.
Yeah, there's plenty of room for even outdoor and stuff. There is still plenty of room. I put that, it looks like it's busy, it's still not busy, but we can do it.
Right. You're saying that I see this open space here that these areas could be.
I like the other building to be larger like that. The tenants don't like, they prefer not to hear anybody, because it's always that common wall or common hallway. So that's, that's why I was thinking this, to split him. But that was the only, not, not for the, I understand what I'm standing in front of people that's supposed to, you know, and I'm good with either way.
So question for you, if the, the single three-car garage building that's behind the three units, is that so that all the units would ultimately, okay. So again, I would echo comments that everybody else has made. It's nice to be able to preserve a little bit of history that we have here. To that extent, to me, I would prefer to see the other buildings be lower so that the old senior center kinda stands out, you know, as a focal point, right? So, you know, my thought would be if you're, and I'm, I'm okay with three buildings, if they were perhaps two stories, so you have six units, and then you wouldn't need that extra garage building right behind there, because you're three units less, and you could create maybe an open space back there, fire pit or something.
A gazebo, fire pit.
Exactly. Yeah. I, I just think it, it will look, in the long run, it'll look better if the initial building stands out because it's higher as opposed to the same.
Okay. I, I, yeah.
Trustee Collier?
I'm good with what everybody said so far.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I didn't think about what trustee Walrath or trustee Dudak had said with their ideas with making it another four-unit building or making it three-two-unit buildings. But I like both of those, and I like that you guys matched the existing building.
The height doesn't bother me matching so much. Maybe lose the building in the middle, more open space a little bit, one less garage.
I agree. I mean, the, the conversation is very good. Trustee Cavelli, do you have any comments off this, right off the top of your head?
The only thing I would say is that because it's a residential area, I don't want to see it look just too overcrowded and overbearing for that neighborhood. I liked what trustee Walrath said about keeping, you know, character of the neighborhood and a concept of a courtyard to leave some open space. But I'm really glad that the builders did come back with the garage. That's what I would add.
Thank you. These are all great comments. My feedback is I like the senior center to be, you know, the main building. I like that. And we talked about when we, about restoring the windows to their grandeur that they were originally. I am in agreement to reducing the number of new buildings to two. I, I don't really have a problem with the three units in each building if they're put together correctly, so it's not so dense-looking. One of the things I was concerned about too is the Main Street entry. And if the, if the buildings could be, if you got rid of the one building, the third garage, you could make the School Street entry the in and out. That way, there's really no traffic coming in and out from Main Street. You have an intersection that with a stop sign that people could navigate easier. Also, Brian, on this, it's, is there a 30-foot setback there or is it less than?
So the project would require rezoning of the property. Right now it's sold for a single-family, so it would go to the R3 district, but the 30-foot setback is what's required on the disfrontage. I would, I would echo what the mayor said about the access to Main Street and for kind of a different reason. The long-term plan we have for downtown and Main Street is that becomes more of a bicycle and pedestrian pathway. And in my mind, the less access you have across that is the less opportunity for incidents, particularly when it's right on School Street anyway, and they can access from that side.
And the idea of, you know, we're a community-based area and having a community-based in this small residential pocket would be really beneficial. I like the idea of the outdoor living. You really can't tell on these plans. Do each of these buildings have balconies off the back of the building?
At the back, yes.
So they do have their own private outdoor, they can have grills and chairs and stuff out there, okay? But then more of a community-based gazebo or fire pit outside, we kinda, I think it would be very charming in the downtown. You know, we are, I hear all the time that we don't have enough luxury apartment living. And I think this is an unbelievable opportunity, especially nestled in this really unique neighborhood that we have there. That this would really tie in quite nicely. And I really like the fact that you're, the throwback to our building, that you would tie these buildings so that they all look like they've been there for a long time. Anybody else have anything else to add?
I agree.
So maybe you look at, at two, two buildings?
One less garage.
Would you like two buildings or maybe a center entrance to look kinda like the school, but leave, you know, a center entrance? I can, I just wanna.
Well, I think that somebody had touched on that before, I think might have been trustee Cavelli had trust, touched on, we want it to look a little bit more residential, but if you have a, you know, the senior center's been there forever and people are used to that. And if you put something that large on the side, it's gonna stand out. But if you have something that really kinda mimics some of the residential areas, I think that might be a little bit more tolerable, because it's gonna have to go through the zoning board. The neighbors are gonna have an input on this. But I think if we plan this right and it, it's accommodating to all the neighbors and it's historically accurate to the existing building, I think that that's something that they would be in tune to really be able to support. I'm guessing.
Agree.
But it's, but I think just the reducing of the one building, reducing of the garage, making more of a common area, community-oriented, reducing the entryway to just off of School Street. I think those are the, that's the feedback that you're getting from the board.
Because you said that you're transparent and I appreciate that. I'll just throw something maybe I should have not said here in the board, but I would do. Can we do it like phase one and phase two? Let's move on with the, with the school and bring this before zoning, bring this before public. And I'll draw, I'll draw one building, two buildings, some kind of gazebo, get rid of that garage. So I'll do some rendering both ways, but can we do like phase one and of course get rid of that driveway to the Main Street? Because we don't need that, leave that grass. And, but, you know, between the architects and these little guys, I call them little guys, because they have to draw this and it takes them a month to draw three things. So can we move with the building? And then whatever's gonna happen, if, if the project goes, goes. If not, there's gonna be grass on the back, you know what I mean? Like, we're not gonna do nothing. So I'm okay with either way, but I just see it that it's gonna take forever, not forever, but it's gonna take the process.
Yeah, it's gonna take some time.
So your main concern is getting, moving forward with the senior center?
For you.
Getting that under.
I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a great idea.
It's kinda slow with the way things go right now. Like, we're waiting for a little transformation, nine months. Waiting for electrical components.
I thought you were talking about government, because we move slow.
Government moves pretty fast comparing to what the private sector moves. It's like in Europe. Like, we, when I grew up, when I was his age, well, a little younger, I was here. But that's what it was back there in Europe. I'm Ukrainian, but that's how it was. Like, you, you had to see if you're gonna have something. And now that's, that's how it's right now. I couldn't believe it. I was looking for the one mirror box, one mirror box, one electrical mirror box. 145 days to get it. After I paid, I went mad and I said, I'm gonna call every supplier in Ford and everywhere else in Carolina, because I did some business around there. Nobody has, one guy said, listen, they just don't exist. Or if they are, we just, nobody was releasing them. So it's like six months for, for the one mirror box. So, you know, the, even that building to get done, that it could be a component that I have to wait eight months to get it, electrical components. So, so, you know, let's do the zoning and let's do this, its processes like phase two, because it has to go through. And then let's do the, the front, phase one. And then if it does, if it scrambles in the end, let's say, well, it scrambles, you know, we're just gonna, phase one is not gonna be affected.
We have the, if the board recalls, you know, redevelopment agreement that we'll be putting together and wrapping up with True North Properties, and we can include that language in there about phase one, phase two. Have the board bless that and move on. I think everyone would be in agreement to start the senior center property, right?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Because the new project has to match the senior center, so that doesn't change much. And in the senior center, I wanna put casings, windows with the little casement on the top, so, because they're narrow windows, so that would look nice. And then we just have to match it with the new building, which is another thing. And just redo, freshen up, clean up, landscape, put the garages. And then in the meantime, we'll hopefully get the phase two and we'll, we'll do it.
Does everybody agree, agreement with that?
Yes.
Trustee Cavelli, are you okay with that?
Yes.
All right. So I think that you have your preliminary approval to move forward with this. Jake, we'll work with you and Brian to get the formalities taken care of. And we look forward to having you be part of the community. I hear great, I talked to my other mayor friends in the communities you work with, and they're like, you know, you do an outstanding job. So we're thrilled that you.
Thank you for doing that.
That you picked Cary to do a project like this. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate, have a good night and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay. We could just hold on for a moment.
Yep.
Any good dad jokes over the weekend, dads? I know I get so much grief from my kids. It's not even funny. Courtney, just tell me when you're ready.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm not employing anything. I'm just saying.
Good?
Yeah.
Trustee Cavelli, you live?
I am.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Moving forward to next item of discussion is regarding food truck requests in our downtown district.
Thank you. Committee of the Whole, we received a request from Brothers Barbecue for parking a food truck in the downtown area close to El Fresco Alley, which has led to an overall discussion about regulations to consider for food trucks and what we will and will not allow in the downtown area. So the first one here is dates and times of operation. I've just listed a few examples here, some choices to choose from, whether that's any day of the week, any time, any day but limited hours, possibly 4:00, 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, or only on weekends, or only on weekends with limited hours, or perhaps pre-scheduled dates and times that are approved by staff as those requests come in. Do you want me to keep going or do you want to talk about?
Why don't you give us the whole overview and we'll come back slide by slide.
Okay. Another thing to consider is the number of food trucks the village would like to permit to be located in the downtown area at one time. And then related to licensing or the registration process, would a separate license be required to operate in the downtown area? And then related to locations, I have a few options here tonight. So this one is the first parking space at the corner of West Main and Spring Street. Some advantages is the good visibility from Route 14 and West Main Street. It would not require any special equipment to move the barricades. We would not have to reconfigure El Fresco Alley. And it would not create any pedestrian safety or sightline issues, so long as the truck is parked far enough away from the crosswalk. So we would just keep the truck parked away from blocking those planters that you can see in the image. Some disadvantages is it does take away one parking space, and it would require additional signage or cones to reserve that spot, just to keep up anyone from parking there. So it would also require staff time to have that placed out. Another potential location is the south end of Spring Street, but outside of the El Fresco Alley boundaries. And advantages is it does not take away any additional downtown parking. We would not need special equipment to move the barricades, and we would not need to reconfigure El Fresco Alley. But some disadvantages is poor visibility from Route 14 and West Main Street, and it would require additional coordination with 750, primarily because they often place a stage just right in front of those barricades. Another option is actually to allow the food truck to park within the boundaries. Some advantages, it does not take away any downtown parking, but it would require us to reconfigure those tables, possibly removing some of the tables that 750 currently puts up. And we would need special equipment to move the barriers to get the truck in and out, or purchase a movable barrier or gate. Another proposed location is the commuter lot drive aisle. Good visibility from Route 14. It would not take away any additional on-street parking. It's somewhat convenient to our current El Fresco Alley tables. However, depending on hours and days that the truck would be approved to be stationed there, it would take up an area utilized for the kiss-and-ride, specifically after the depot has, or the depot plaza has been constructed, and we fill in the current kiss-and-ride spots that you see there. And then we would not be able to place tables next to this location until the depot plaza project is constructed, specifically the fence. Here's another proposed location at the six-hour parking lot. Good visibility from Route 14, and it would not take away any on-street parking. Poor visibility from the core downtown on West Main Street. It's not convenient to the tables at El Fresco Alley. It would take away parking, one to two parking spaces in this lot, and we would need to reserve those parking spots. And the final proposed location we have here is Cary Street. It is somewhat convenient to El Fresco Alley tables. Again, a poor visibility issue. It would take away one to two spots, and we would need signage or cones to reserve that spot. So those are the locations that staff has proposed to you tonight. Any comments or anything you'd like to see again?
I'd just like to add before we get into the board questions, the board has been very clear previously about food trucks and wanting them to be on private property. And that's the messaging that we've conveyed to food truck operators. Why we brought this forward to you this evening was it, it was a unique request in that this is a, a business that has a space within the downtown, and we felt that it deserved coming back here to the Village Board and just having the conversation here of, you know, those, those previous requests of keeping it on private property, if that's still held true, or if we wanted to look at some of these other options. I just thought it deserved another discussion here with the board about the downtown, excuse me, the downtown area.
Do we want to go back to the first slide? We can kinda talk about hours of operation, days, and does anybody have any?
Can we go before that? Can I ask, how many requests have we had for anybody else who uses a downtown area with food truck?
This would be the only request we've received.
All right, so go ahead.
I just wanna say, if we have, I believe we have people that requested, just wanna come and talk about what their thoughts are with it before we, I would love to hear what they have to say about it. You know, what their thoughts.
Jim, did you want to come up?
Yeah, I'd like to hear the plan and what days.
What are your, what are your thoughts?
What do you envision?
What do you, what is your?
What is your ask?
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
James Mottolo. We're at 27 Unit B Johnus Road in Cary. I guess our initial request is, you know, like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, four to, four to eight, four to nine. Nothing too extreme, nothing too long. Good visibility. The first one is ideal, you know, parking in that first spot on Main Street. As far as like saving it and stuff and, and anything from the village, that could be happening, you know, set out a cone. It's easy enough. We do it in our parking lot to keep people parking there. Approved by staff. What else would we just talk about?
Permits.
Oh, permits, yeah. So permits. So we believe, and this is something we've always done from day one when I set up the truck in 2019, is everything needs to be run by health department. Health department's on our friend, not our enemy. You have to be, you have to have your health certificate. Has to be health, safety, sanitation on your truck at all times. There has to be a, some sort of, something from the village that says we can park there. So like a $25, $50 night is, is nothing out of the ordinary. What's the last name? Health. Taxes. So want to make sure that we're registered in the city. So the taxes come here, not their, not their home city. And then last but not least is commissaries. So making sure they have a commissary that is health department-approved. Believe it or not, a lot of food trucks work out of the garage, and that's, that's unsafe and unsanitary.
So you're looking for like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, four to eight kind of a thing?
Yeah.
That's, that's your ideal?
Yeah. I mean, you could open up to those three days. I mean, it's, you know, Wednesday nights are really not good nights.
It's cruise night.
You know, Saturdays, yeah. Saturdays or Sundays are really not good days either, you know, for food trucks in the downtown area.
Eleven to eight on a Saturday would be good.
Courtney, if you go back to.
Lunch on a Saturday?
Yeah, sometimes a lunch, yeah.
But, you know, again, we would make sure that, we don't want to anger anybody else downtown either. We want to make sure that it's all.
Well, what's, what's intriguing to me about this is that you are a brick and mortar business in the downtown district. You.
Correct.
You have a space, you, I mean, literally, you have a space that could be a restaurant if you had the capability of turning that into a restaurant.
Correct.
This is just an extension of that. I'm glad, go ahead. This is just an extension of that. I'm glad, go ahead. Did you want to?
I was going to ask about the spot. I don't know if anybody knows. How many, so, I know this is one request right now. So, if this opens it up, the more requests possible if we change this. How many trucks could park in the spot that's showing on the screen?
Which spot? I want to write that with the metro?
What, that's there right now? I would guess you'd, maybe Director Morimoto, you can kind of chime in on that.
Thirty feet of furniture.
Thirty feet of furniture.
So, you can be able to maneuver your truck in and then have room forward and aft. You know, making sure that there's room to get out, nobody's blocked in. And then, you know, movement around the trucks.
There are some, just, and we have it on here, the disadvantage of if there were other food trucks there from a kiss-and-ride standpoint, if the metro continues to increase, it could get a little busy.
And the kiss-and-ride that's here now is going away.
Yes.
Correct.
That's not going away right now. When we're doing the resurf, I'm sorry, I'm talking to Director Morimoto. When we resurface this area right now for safety reasons until we do the major redevelopment, is that, it's just the area that's, we're not taking away those four spots that were kiss-and-ride right now?
Correct. The curb lines and the parking spaces for the kiss-and-ride that exist will remain until the redevelopment for the plaza.
So, we'd still have four spots at the kiss-and-ride to accommodate a couple of different trucks that are there. They would just line up. And that's, I mean, that's our thought process when we approved our community pavilion, plaza, whatever we're going to call it, to have that be for food trucks to pull up there and we'll have, you know, it'll be nice grassy areas with the fire pit and tables and that type of things with the pavilion there. I mean, that's our goal. This would be awesome to do it, but we, what we do for one, we do for all. We have to figure out how can we make this work for anybody that wants to come and do business in the village Cary with a food truck? And I think, I think they're great. I think it's a, really gives a real cool vibe in the downtown. I see you down at the, there, all the, Spirit Water, you're downtown for a cruise night. I mean, it's, it's great to see that addition and it doesn't seem to be hurting any of our existing brick-and-mortar restaurants. So, I think this just only gets more people into the downtown, gives them more options, more opportunities. And this is going to be part of our social district, if I'm not mistaken. So, you could get a drink at one of the bars and come over and order food from you and sit. You know, I have no problem with, you know, adding additional tables over there. I don't think the board would either. We can reallocate some of the tables we have for right now. The concern that we have about this right now, and I don't know if it's from safety, maybe Director Morimoto can answer this, but the temporary fence that's up there along the train tracks, is that suitable for something like this? When we, because the concrete's going to come, like soon, not like next week, but sooner than later. You know, government moves slow. But, you know, as soon as we get that in there, that's something that we can juggle some of these tables to accommodate something like that. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we do have an opportunity to do something this year because we could use those barricades as a fence?
No, the barricades that are there, those jersey walls, those are from the demolition of the old station. So, those were placed there as part of the required separation that the contractor had to get with their permit from the railroad.
Okay, so they're not even ours.
Pacific does own that property still. So, we would believe if it was to be used for outdoor dining and tables, I won't speak for the railroad, but I would imagine one of the requirements, I think we would echo that, is that we would want that fence that proposed in our Depot Plaza to be in place just as that buffer.
Yeah, we would agree that it needs to have a fence for us to be there just to keep people off the tracks. You know, my concern would be, yeah.
If we can to back up, we're planning the details and we haven't decided if we wanted to do this. I want to kind of back up to 30,000 feet and say, okay, you know, we, I think we're all in agreement that the food truck idea in general, we like, everybody likes to have it downtown. We think that it's going to be successful, but to his point earlier, we want to make sure we're dealing with people who are doing it the right way and following all the same rules so we're all on a fair playing field. So, the kind of thing I'm envisioning in my head is this, as we're leading up to all these improvements that are coming in the next 18 to 24 months, this is a perfect opportunity to lay out some basic timeframes. We're just doing a few days a week by appointment only or by permit only. I'm assuming that the way they operate is once they secure the location, that they announce it via different ways to their customer base, et cetera. So, if we picked either certain days of the week for the rest of the year or we just target 20 or 30 days for the remainder of the season and lay out, we have spots A, B, C, and D available, whatever the board sees fit to approving as far as locations go, then you've got a fixed number of spots available and you can let that be known that on Thursday night, the 17th, you can have spot A, B, or C. These are the ones that have been approved. Whoever calls and pays whatever fee we've assigned. So, you're kind of structuring it a little more. You can take that down the road in the future and say, okay, Cary has five viable spots. They're always available from May 31st to September 30th. You have to call in advance and get it down. And next thing you know, we've got a little side business going, coming in, creating these portable restaurants to add to our downtown district on a more scheduled basis.
Well, I would agree with everything and some trucks have huge reach. Like, our reach on our social media pages are, where are we at? 25 to 50 K per week on average. So, if anything, we would be, you know, reaching that amount of people and bringing them, hopefully bringing a percentage of that to the downtown area so they can eat with us and they can see the other restaurants and stuff that is down there. And then, hopefully, you know, it only builds from there.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Volo's a good example.
But back to what Trusty Wildworth was saying about, you know, regulating and what's nice about your particular operation, that you're Cary business and anything that you run through your register, we get a little piece of that.
Correct.
And some of these other food trucks that may not be out of the village Cary, what's in it for us to allow them to come here other than providing an additional service? It's nice to be able to get something. So, that's, I think, where permitting comes in. Where if you're a local business, maybe it's a discounted permit or whatever. But, I kind of like where you were talking about maybe a couple of different areas offering that up. I was thinking, we've been talking about just having one area, but maybe if we had one or two areas that we can offer that are in close approximation that you could... The way I'm looking at this is staff time. We have a very minimal staff. We do a lot with a few people. To add another element to this is just, you know, I'm just looking at the scheduling. Who would be responsible for this? And what if there's a conflict? You know, these things kind of can snowball. So, we'd like to make it simple. We'd like to make it that it's, people want to do this and that we can encourage new food trucks to come and, you know, get an idea of what we're about here. So, and I think that's something that we need to talk about is that, you know, how do we manage this?
I agree 100% that it has to be structured. We have to pick out the locations then. We have to have a point of contact. Not saying, but just saying, like, say Courtney, for example. Whoever knows it, and I'm not putting out, but whoever it is, that there's a point of contact for where it is because as this, as we start this, I think it's great. I think it's good to start off small because we get down, we get the kinks out before we get everything down and that it's down and more people, the more we get down downtown, the more hype there's going to be about this. More food trucks are going to want to come. But if we can start off small and get it organized and say, okay, Jim, we tried out this one. Here's, we hit this bubble. Okay, well, how do we fix that? So, when we get a little bit further along and we have more things available, we've now worked out those kinks. So, I think that organization is the key, having some type of permitting process. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I thought it used to be that didn't food trucks have to get licensed from the county?
Yeah. Every truck that comes into McKenna County, do they have a one-day permit or seasonal?
Right. So, and I think that we do something where if we're going to charge something for that that should be discounted for someone that is, any sales tax revenue here. I don't know, we can say, I mean, I don't, I don't know, we can say, hey, if you're registered in Woodstock, you can't come to Cary.
Well, one of the things that some towns do, like for instance, Volo, Volo would charge $25 and then that would just be the flat fee and they knew they weren't going to get the sales tax back. But, an average truck is going to make, well, at Volo High Days, we were making like $3,000 a night. The last time we were there, we made $400. So, I mean, you take the good with the bad when you're rolling through all that. So, if you just have like one flat fee, saying, okay, we understand you're not going to go through the hoops to register your truck in our city for a one-day event or a two-day event. So, we're just going to take $25 or $50 upfront and then that way you get paid.
I think it really behooves us to get a trial basis going, to get something and work it out because to your point, Mayor, when the Plaza, when the Depot Plaza is done and we have the vision that we've been working towards, this will be a premier add to that and something that'll work in all of the events that we're, you know, dreaming up in our heads that we're going to have in the future. This will be a significant part of it and we need to have these kinks worked out and these fees and everything structured in place before we get to that point.
Is this the picture that was up before from the depot? That's the less impact on staff, kind of? I know you had put up, I mean, in some point when this plaza is done, you can designate those spots for food trucks only with signage and no other parking there, so it's already set.
That would be during the day, that would be kissing.
Oh, right. I'm saying after hours it would be assigned, it's set for this.
And not, not long ago, my husband and I attended an event you guys were at in Woodstock. It was really cool. It was like a food truck.
The Food Truck Store on the Square?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if we want to do that someday, but...
Trucks on the Square, that brought in, you know, that was, every truck paid 200 bucks to get into it. They promoted it.
There was a ton of people there.
Yeah, there was, what was it this year? 10,000?
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, there was between, there was 10,000 plus or minus people that showed up to that event that night. They had local, all the local borrowers had something in the middle. You know, everybody got A.D.'d and, you know, it was, it was fun. It was a good night for us.
Super cool night.
The last thing we wanted to mention was a COI. Every truck needs to, our opinion, every truck needs to provide the village with a COI as an additional rider. And if they can't produce that, I wouldn't have that truck in town. That means they're not insured.
And the whole harm is our trustee attorney here has just advised us.
Like, we have no problem doing that.
That makes, that makes sense. This is a good conversation. Really, it's a conversation we needed to have because of what's come.
Things have changed, yeah.
Yeah, and really, things could be tweaked, you know? As government moves slow, we can move kind of quick around here. We can, we're pretty agile when it comes to making sure that things are, you know, kind of dealt with. Trusty Dudak, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, just a couple. I think we have a resident expert here that's a Cary business and clearly there takes, you know, coordination of it. So, I certainly think we ought to continue to keep you guys very much in the loop and...
Yeah, I think you need more willing to help out.
Yeah, because one of the notes I had is there must be a food truck community. I mean, if we wanted to have 10 people here, I'm sure you could get 10 people that you know very well.
Oh, easily, yeah.
And so, and much like Jennifer had mentioned, I was out over the weekend in Indiana and there was an event that we went to. They had six trucks. One was an ice cream truck, which was really cool. He was the busiest one there. And you don't usually think of an ice cream truck as a food truck. But nonetheless, it was there and probably made the most money of anybody.
Easily, yeah.
You know, you mentioned private property. I mean, to me, I think about, when you look at some of the pictures, that Harris banquet seems to be just ideal for that, just throwing that out. You guys commented on cruise night and one of the notes I made for myself was how, because to me, it seems like a cruise night would be unnatural to have half a dozen food trucks there. We already have the street closed. There's already people there. There's something to see other than food. So, how does cruise night work for you guys?
Cruise night is hit or miss. So, the first night, we did very well. First night, lots of cars, lots of people, lots of attraction. We like going to Cary Cruise Night. One, we're hometown, so we want to always put on our best face. And there's other nights where it's too hot, too rainy, or something along those lines or where maybe we're only making, you know, just barely breaking even. And that's what happened last time. But, that's not going to deter us from coming. We're always going to do a cruise night. I would say having multiple trucks at a cruise night, maybe not. Maybe, you know, one savory, one sweet. Like, we have the, no, Conai, yeah, she did really, really well, you know, because everybody loves Conai.
Because it was 92 degrees.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think, to your point, that's part of the coordination that we have to work on. We don't want to have six people all offering beef sandwiches that doesn't do anything.
Yeah, no, you don't, yeah, you always want to have diverse, making sure that there's more than one choice. And then, also having something maybe that's not offered downtown. Like, you don't want to have another pizza truck down there. Yeah, or burgers down there. I mean, you have too many of those down, you know? Nobody's going to beat a Trax burger. You can't beat that off a truck easily.
And I think with the cruise nights, because it's run by the chamber, they only invite chamber members. So, that's not open to anyone. And I understand that they're putting it on, so that's an advantage. If you're a member of the chamber, they're going to invite chamber members to come down.
And I believe that, speaking of the chamber, that they have an agreement with BMO Harris that they could use their parking.
Right, with Harris.
So, you know, these are all things that, you know, I like the idea of where the new plaza is going to be. Jake and I spent quite a bit of time there last week, kind of going back and forth, looking at these areas. I was kind of intrigued by, we talked about where the one spot is in front of the White Office building there that's adjacent. But, Director Morimoto, question for you. Is there enough room for where the planters are? If we were to scoot those a little bit, maybe two feet in towards the marked pedestrian walkway, is that still enough room to, maybe a food truck could park parallel to those boxes? That way, we're not giving up a parking space. And this still would have direct access to our tables that are on El Fresco Alley. You know, see where the, our planter boxes are?
Yeah.
There, maybe two feet off of the hash or the marked. If those were to scoot in, would there be enough depth to where the truck could fit there safely and it wouldn't be, is that something you could look at and just kind of give us your thoughts on it?
Yes, we actually looked at that and kind of laying out some of these options for you. In doing that, my worry is that, you can see, purposely put that little person walking aligned with that crosswalk there, if a food truck was parked further forward, the visibility of that pedestrian for other traffic would be completely blocked just by the height and mass of those wonderful food trucks. So, that's the, that was the intent for kind of pushing it backward. We know they're longer than a standard parking space, so this would overhang, you know, past the space. But, that would give enough sightlines and clear visibility for pedestrians that would still use that crosswalk.
I think that's the best suited place to utilize El Fresco Alley with our tables.
At this point.
At this point.
Yep.
Right, in the future, we can see the other, envision it to other places, but for right now.
And I might add, if the kiss-and-ride lane or by the old Depot building location, until that Depot Plaza is constructed, we could look at another option to try and put the fence up sooner or at least maybe a temporary, a long-term temporary fence. It would require separate approvals from the railroad unless we own the property and some other logistics, but it could be something to explore. My staff reminded me, thankfully, that the, we actually do have fencing in our possession that we actually were waiting for a permit request from about a year and a half ago to put on the south commuter lot. So, we have materials we could maybe, with proper approvals in place with the railroad, redistribute those and try and accelerate the timeline of a barrier there. But, there's some unknowns and some logistics that would be required with that option.
Any other feedback or questions?
The one final question, are we just interested in focusing on allowing the food trucks on public property within the downtown area? For now?
That's all, that's all we're requesting. An average food truck is 23, 25 feet long, eight feet wide. So, the commuter lot's ideal. This is probably number two.
So, is the committee looking to maybe start this process with okaying something like this for the time being? Making sure that legally we are headed on the right path and that we will look at, you know, like maybe $1,000 a night? No, no, but coming up with something that's fair and reasonable. I just don't want to take, don't want to invest a lot of staff time in organizing this.
Are we also going to look at if it's a Cary-based business, give it a first preference or how we...
Well, again, that's how do we handle, my next question was, how do we schedule it? How is this scheduled?
I think maybe we, staff scratches together some options here that we bring back to the board. Location, time, and process.
Yeah.
I think we're all happy to work with you guys too with, like, I know some of the other villages have people that help do it. Like, Volo, they have promoters that help them book them and they take like $5. So, you can do $45. You guys get 40 bucks. Probably it's $5 just to help, so you guys don't use all your staff. Yeah, working with a promoter actually works out pretty well because they'll be in charge of scheduling, finding the food trucks, making sure that we don't have the same food truck every week. Now, that's one thing you never want to do because then the spot gets stale and nobody wants to go there. And gets all the information, like the insurance and the health department. Right, they would, they would can...
That'd be great if you could.
Correct everything and then send it to the village, so everything is copied. And then, they would actually keep a copy of everything for themselves.
Could you send us that information or that, give some, Director Simmons over there?
I think why reinvent the wheel? If there's some people that are doing it right, let's emulate what they're doing. Make sure that it meets our purposes from a legality standpoint and then tweak it from there. But, that's the way to start it off. Make sure that it meets our purposes from a legality standpoint, and then tweak it from there, but that's the way to start it off.
Yeah, we'd be more than happy to help on that situation.
That'd be great.
Thank you. We'll be, we'll keep you posted.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thanks.
No food samples tonight?
Did you drive the truck here?
Don't go anywhere, we're almost done, don't go anywhere.
Yes, yeah. Nothing else is on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at seven seventeen.